Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Can I make a motion? Carter's second, so all in favor, show hands. Citizens and participation. Excuse me.
Thank you, Ms. President. Thank you, Ms. President. We had no one request participation as per board policy BDDH.
Written communications?
We had no written communication either.
Citizens update military.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of General Martin and Garrison Commander Colonel Towns, I'd like to invite the community out to our annual Fourth of July event. It's a free event. Have a lot of activities, starting with a color run at eight in the morning. And then at four o'clock, we'll have static displays, pony rides, all kinds of activities. Our entertainment is a rock band that starts at six thirty, and that's Red Sun Rising, followed by country star Jared Neiman. And then fireworks at dark. So the installation is open to the community, and we'd love to have everyone out to join us out there. Also, I'd like the community to know that the museum is a free facility that's open there, the Fort Leonard Wood Military Museum. And if you've never been out there, it's a great experience for families. And that venue is outstanding. And then our recplex with activities is also open to the community. I know you have to stop at the gate to get base access or post-access. So and then at the next meeting, I'll have more information on our sponsorship program for new students coming into the area where we provide sponsors for them to their military and transfers into the school district. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. District, now it's Ms. Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two thousand three hundred and twenty-five students enrolled in summer school, which is about forty percent of our students, just to let everyone know. That's a large number, and we're really excited to have them here this summer. All parents of students who plan to have their children attend the Waynesville R six School District this fall need to provide proof of residence prior to the start of the nineteen twenty school year to comply with Missouri law. Parents can email proof to residents@waynesville.k twelve dot M O dot U S, mail it to Student Services at two hundred Fleetwood Drive in Waynesville, or drop it off on June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth between seven thirty and nine thirty A.M. or four thirty and six thirty P.M. at the Tiger Joe Cafe located inside Waynesville High School near the entrance to the auditorium. Also, before the start of the school year, both eighth graders and seniors will need to have two vaccines unless they are exempted. They will need the T-DAP and the Meninja Cockle vaccine. New student enrollment will be July twenty-third and twenty-fourth for all students regardless of their grade in the lecture hall at Waynesville High School. Our smaller schools on Fort Leonard Wood will be open on limited days in July, so please call ahead before you stop by. To participate in a sport, Waynesville Middle and High School students must submit a completed Misha physical form. Free physicals are donated by Mercy Clinic in St. Robert and will be performed from five to six thirty P.M. on August sixth through eighth, based on the students' last names. A parent must be present for the physicals. And children just got to hear about getting shots updated, so we might as well throw in. The first day of school for the nineteen twenty school year will be Wednesday, August the fourteenth, and it will not be a late start. So get those shots, and we'll see you back here on August the fourteenth.
And I gotta apologize to the administrators. Last month, I walked out and was told by several principals that you jinxed us because you wished us a great year. We have a week left. And that week, we had tornadoes, power outages, flooding, and everything else. So next year, I will wait till this meeting to congratulate everybody on a great school year. Consent agenda, bid recommendations, recommendations, Dr. Berger.
Field any questions, but all pretty routine items, and we'll get into FY twenty spending next month.
Financials?
Financials for June tenth, twenty nineteen. In the MOSIP account, fifty-two million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars, eighty-two cents. We have ten point five million in the CD accounts with the Bank of Crocker. General account, nine hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars, seventy-one cents. Payroll account, seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars, sixty-four cents. June tenth, total funds, sixty-four million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars, seventeen cents.
Berger, motion to approve the consent agenda items A through J.
I'll make that motion.
Can I make a motion? Do I have a second? Mr. Dearing's second. All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Transportation Employee of the Month, Mrs. Bills.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my honor tonight to get to recognize Marty Reed as June Transportation Employee of the Month. Marty has worked as a bus driver for our district for the past two years. Marty is very level-headed. He's professional, and he's always very positive. He provides structure to the bus and had perfect attendance during second semester. So that is why we are so honored to recognize Marty as this month's Transportation Employee of the Month. Come on up, Marty.
Congratulations, Marty. You have a good evening.
You too.
Congratulations, Ms. Reed. Thank you. Discussion item, Waynesville Middle School, Dr. Berger.
Yeah, very excited, so starting to see some activity down there. We'll pull Dawn up. We've not seen him in a while, and he'll let us know what's going on.
Great, thank you. Normally, every time we get together, we're looking at new construction. So this will be a little bit of an unusual thing here that we're looking at construction that's being demolished. And these photos were taken, some by Brian Nash from our office, and I believe we received some from the district and some from the contractor. So it's kind of a compilation of photographs. But I'm sure that the building up to this point has been changing on a daily basis as we begin to look at the demolition of the various wings here of the building. And I would estimate at this point, we're probably somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe sixty to seventy-five percent of exterior masonry walls, some of the interior masonry walls, or all of the interior masonry walls, rather, in those demolished areas coming down. As you might guess, the debris is being sorted for recycling purposes. And Dr. Berger, you might know this better than I do, but it's my understanding that there was no hazardous materials identified to date, at least.
Not on the last round testing, that's correct.
Okay, so that's really a good thing because in our bid documents, we had actually allocated dollars, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for disposal of hazardous materials. So if none of that, or if there are no hazardous materials that need to go to a specific landfill, all of that money will be returned directly to the district. These are kind of exciting to see if you're happy to see the building go down. And I guess if you're sad to see it go down there a little, you know, it probably brings a tear to your eye. But new things are scheduled, and it will begin shortly. Portions of the building, some portions come down pretty easy, pretty quickly. It looks like they're making a lot of good progress, and I believe they are. But there's a few delicate areas where we'll be demolishing adjacent to the gymnasiums that, you know, take a little bit more time, a little bit more care. And then once the building rubble and the like has been removed, then it's the, that's really kind of, it looks like almost one of those tornado shots, doesn't it? But once all of that rubble is removed, then you have to dig down into the footings. And then there, you know, that's a little time-consuming as well as some of the underground utilities. So it's all moving forward, and it's on schedule. I wish I could show you something new, but unfortunately, it's just all of the demolition. But it's interesting to see it. And again, it's kind of a joyous moment and maybe a little bit of a sad moment to see it go down. That's it, unless I can answer any questions for you? I'd be happy to. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. School counseling update, Mrs. Long.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on our school counselors in our school counseling program. Wanted to just really quickly address the fact that in our state, as well as through, as you guys know, recent policy in the district, there's been a renaming or rebranding of what was formerly known as guidance counselors to school counselors. And this is a movement that came out of their professional organizations to better reflect how broad the scope of work has become that counselors perform. Prior to this time, obviously, they still maintain a focus on post-graduation planning and administrative support. But they have added a great deal of work in the areas of emotional support and family intervention, social development, in addition to those academic and career planning. So you will see that throughout a lot of policy, throughout the buildings, that they are now referred to as school counselors and no longer as guidance counselors. Just a quick look at our staffing for the district. It has not changed. We maintain two counselors at East and Freedom, one at the rest of the elementary buildings in the Career Center, and five at the high school. Two, that should say two, at the middle school. One focus area that the counselors worked on this year was their bullying education, and the lessons developed and provided from our counselors. They worked together to develop consistent and age-appropriate bullying lessons provided for each grade level. You can see the different pieces that were required to be in each of those lessons that they came up with. They delivered lessons a minimum of once per semester for each grade level. Many grade levels received extra lessons, but that was a minimum that they determined to give this consistent type of lesson plan to the students. After the high school counselors gave their first lesson, they surveyed samplings of students in various classrooms and grade levels and revised those second semester lessons based upon student feedback. Students actually gave some really good feedback about what they thought should be included and what made it relevant to them. They also created a handout. You'll see that example on the right that was sent home with their first bullying lesson of the year. So when every counselor, regardless of grade level or building, gave this, they had the same basic template for it. They just plugged in, as you can see, this is an example from a counselor at Freedom. She plugged in her name in the bottom, and this was for grades kindergarten through second grade. And this went home for parents, so they know what was presented to their students and gave them a few talking points to talk to their students about bullying as well. This year also, as you know, per recent legislation, our counselors worked to develop and implement suicide prevention and awareness lessons for grades five through twelve. They also worked with our school therapists to provide professional development in this area to all building staff members. Another focus area has been transitions. And so we worked together. The counselors came up with some universal, across the board throughout the district, transition supports for new students as they move in. You can see those listed here. These are the minimum agreed-upon supports that are in every building, including the fact that they will be, each building now has a student ambassador program. Sometimes at the secondary levels, they'll call that student-to-student or junior student-to-student. But those students, that provides the new students a student mentor to walk them around the first day, accompany them during lunch and times like that, give them the student perspective of the building. They are giving student interest inventories at the time of enrollment, timed out a check-in system where either our military family life consultants, the counselor, a process coordinator, or if there's another staff member that they feel would fit better, check in with those new students, not just like one week after they enroll, but we decided on days three, five, ten, and fifteen, just to check and see if anything's popping up as far as how smooth their transition's going, what questions they might have, or what concerns they might have. And then each building has a minimum of a quarterly new student gathering. Many have monthly brunches or little social get-togethers for the students with activities during the school day. Another area of focus was for students exiting our building. This is really something that we had not done much work in the past. And so we worked this spring specifically to, as soon as the buildings were notified that a family would be leaving and a student would be disenrolling and going to another district, they would, if they're military-impacted, then the registrar that was notified would inform their military family life consultant and utilize them to help ease that transition out, what questions and concerns and anxieties the student might have as they're planning to go to a new school next year. We also provided, you can see a couple of pictures there, Wood Elementary gives dog tags to their students as they leave. Many of the elementaries, as you can see in the upper-right corner, do memory books. Those were some students at the end of the year getting ready to leave. They had their memory books that their teachers write in and provide them a little memento as they go. And we worked at the secondary level to implement that framed picture is another, like a photo that a secondary student could take with them as a memory from the district. That was a bit of a pilot. We learned from it, and we're gonna keep doing photos, but we're gonna do them a little bit differently next year, based upon how that went and the student input. And speaking of transitions, transitions between schools in the district was a real focus this year that our counselors helped to support in a lot of different capacities from everywhere, from elementary counselors that went to Williams for the day. They visited, they were just talking this morning about how much they learned from watching some of their incoming kindergarten students in that preschool setting out at Williams. Fifth grader students from all of the buildings toured the sixth-grade center, spent that day learning more about the building. Sixth-grade students went up to the middle school, and you can see how that, they also, within their building, participated in a pilot involving some different transitions that they'll be facing into seventh grade to help introduce those to them as the year ended. Eighth-grade students came up to the high school for the passing of the torch and participated in a club fair. And our Career Center hosted tours for both their sophomore and our sixth-grade students. These are just another kind of listing of additional areas of support that our counselors have focused on. You can read throughout these, you know, everything from testing to support to great support for trauma-informed school strategies, a lot of work on diversity events, military child awareness this year. They helped assist with the review of Sabres data and the at-risk intervention program that we piloted as well. Looking into next year, we are, they are currently working on updating their counseling curriculum, increasing that amount of support for transitioning students, figuring out what has worked best and what areas we need to continue to work on to improve for those transitioning students, support of Leader in Me implementation, and updating our web pages and our websites to better reflect the work that we do. Have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Spring sports program, Mr. Ace.
First off, I would just like to thank everyone's involvement, community, board members, administrators, teachers, everyone. It was a great first year for me, and we did some tremendous things with our student athletes. Happy and looking forward to next year and year two. So we'll go over the four areas, academics, tiger performance training, our community outreach and involvement, and our competitive success for the spring season. If you take a look here, we have our team GPAs. Those are all of our spring programs. You can look at them individually, but as, on an average, we had a three-point-three-one average GPA of our spring teams. Also included a yearly multi-sport GPA. This is something that I tracked throughout the year, just looking at how our two-sport and three-sport athletes compared overall. If you notice here, our two-sport student athletes had a three-point-oh-three GPA, while our three-sport athletes actually had a three-point-three-two GPA. So obviously, those involved in a little bit more, are a little bit more successful because they're having that win program throughout the year. These are our three seasons, the comparison chart. You can look at those. But overall, for our varsity athletes, we had a three-point-two-six average GPA. This spring, we had a number, eighty-three student athletes that received all-conference and were honorable mention for academic all-conference. Forty-six students received all-conference, which is a three-point-seven-five or above, and thirty-seven students were honored with honorable mention, and that was a three-point-five or up to three-point-seven-four. As we move forward, our win program going into the nineteen-twenty school year is gonna see a couple of changes. We are gonna require that win time twice per week, so that will be, you know, built into the schedule, really just changing the start of practices a little later and pushing those activity buses back. Offseason requirements for those students that have subpar academic standing will actually be required outside of the season to be there once per week. Win will actually begin at two forty-five and ends at three thirty. So really, the practices will start at three thirty, just like it did this year. Overall, the success that we had with our win program for the year, you could see that we had eleven-point-one percent decrease of students with Ds and/or Fs, student athletes with Ds or Fs, and a fourteen-point-six percent decrease in students with F over both semesters. Tiger Performance Training, currently at this moment, we have seventy-one percent of our student athletes attending our Tiger Performance Training. Seventy percent or more of the time, and this is from the beginning of the year, actually starting June of last year. Going into next year, we have four hundred and forty-six students enrolled in fitness and conditioning for the nineteen-twenty school year. This spring, we did incorporate TPT after-school for sixth-grade students. The average attendance for, from March to May for those sixth-grade students alone was forty-eight students on a daily basis. That actually focused on our technique, our functional movements, and some competitive things that we did along those months. Community outreach, we had a, we had a, our twelve-C engineering A L C, A L C class came to one of our soccer games, and they did some, some can collection along with our student athletes for our women's shelter. In addition to that, we had multiple pie partner groups coming to our sporting events over the year and helping with our track meets. We also hosted a Class Five District Nine baseball tournament this year. The last time we did this was in two thousand and twelve. It was a great success despite all the rain that we had. I did have some blisters on my thumbs from raking, raking the fields quite a bit, so. In addition to that, we hosted dual-sectional Misa Track Meet, which was two, two classes, Class Three, Section Three, and Class Five, Section One. We had forty teams who attended that event, and this is the largest track meet that we have ever hosted here at Waynesville this year. Brought a lot of people into the community, a lot of teams staying and spending the night. Competitive success, we had twenty all-conference student athletes and twelve all-district student athletes for the spring of this year. In addition to that, during the spring, we had ten students that actually signed that are gonna go on and compete at the college level. And then if you look at our overall competitive success for the year and within the conference, you can see that we finished seventh overall. But that is a fourteen-and-a-half-point increase from last year where we scored eighty-three points. We're getting up into those triple digits, so I look forward to improving that next year. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Race. End-of-year performance, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to share our end-of-year performance data. There is a lot of data here, so we do actually use this throughout the year. The information you'll see tonight, it's monitored throughout the year within the classroom and within the grade-level collaborative teams and is used to guide instructional planning and intervention. Building steering teams look at this data regularly as part of the PLC process to identify trends and focus areas within their buildings. Quarterly, as Dr. Henry meets with buildings for their quarterly building reviews, we look at very much of the same data with the building principals and identify those areas in need of additional support. And then as part of our district leadership teams, as we meet monthly, we review this as well to look at those district-wide trends to see if there's some changes that we need to make and also to identify future focus areas. The first data we're gonna look at is our district writing prompt. It's utilized across the grade level four times per year, and it measures student progress in writing towards mastery of our end-of-year writing standards. It presents students with the unfamiliar text, and then they respond to it. It's similar to what they would see on a state assessment or in real life when they read something and have to respond to the information. The writing prompt is assessed in three areas. Area one is question, and this assesses students' ability to develop an idea that addresses the topic of the prompt. And the area of question, seventy-five-point-three percent of students were proficient as compared to forty-eight, forty-five-point-eight percent at the end of first quarter. End-of-year performance in two thousand and nineteen in the area of question increased from sixty-nine-point-four percent in May of two thousand and eighteen to seventy-five-point-three percent this year. So we did see an increase in this area. Area two of the writing prompt is text evidence, and this assesses students' ability to respond to the prompt using specific and relevant text-based details. Sixty-seven-point-six percent of students were proficient in this area on prompt four as compared to forty-eight-point-five percent on prompt one. Overall, end-of-year performance in the area of text evidence has remained fairly consistent from year to year. So we've not seen a lot of growth in this area. It's just remained fairly flat. Area three looks at students' use of grade-level appropriate conventions. District-wide, sixty-six-point-one percent of students were proficient on conventions on the end-of-year prompt as compared, which was twenty-two percent growth from prompt one to prompt four. And conventions increased from sixty-three-point-five percent proficient to sixty-six-point-one percent, sixty-six-point-one percent proficient when comparing May of two thousand and eighteen to May of two thousand and nineteen. Oh, there we go. The end of, at the high school level, they do not do the quarterly writing prompts like we use in K through eight. The end-of-course exam for high school students utilizes a blended writing prompt, which presents students with multiple source documents, and the prompt requires them to then respond in a manner that blends genres of writing such as narrative, persuasive, and opinion writing. Additionally, students need to formally or informally cite the source documents. Since this is a shift in how writing has typically been taught, our English nine and ten classes complete a blended writing prompt instead of that quarterly prompt. And they are assessed in the areas of blending genres, content development, conventions, organizational structure, and use of resources. Conventions were the strongest area for our high school students this year consistently. Now moving on to our proficiency on our standards. So each grade level has identified their priority standards, and we monitor growth in student proficiency throughout the year. At the end of fourth quarter, students in pre-K through six had an overall proficiency on ELA standards of seventy-four-point-eight percent as compared to forty-seven-point-four percent at the end of first quarter. This slide depicts progress, depicts the performance on standards of subgroups as compared to the overall average. Subgroup performance data is monitored as part of the PLC process to ensure that we identify any gaps and intervene in a timely manner. Performance of students with special education needs continues to be the main area of focus when we look at our subgroup data. We have seen a slight decrease in proficiency the past few years in our standards data. And in the, in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, we transitioned fully to the new Missouri Learning Standards. And additionally, curriculum teams have been working to refine assessments and expectations to ensure we're meeting the expectations of the state. This has led to more rigorous assessments at the local level, which is part of why we're seeing that slight downward trend. At the end of fourth quarter, students in pre-K through six had an overall proficiency on assessed math standards of seventy-seven percent. on assessed math standards of 77% as compared to 59% at the end of first quarter. And in math, our performance gap between students with special education needs and the overall average is 13.4% as compared to the gap of 18% in ELA for our students with special education needs. So again, that's our subgroup where our primary focus is at this point. Overall, the percentage of students scoring proficient on common assessments and math once again is down slightly. We attribute part of that to the transition to the new Missouri Learning Standards and the work that our curriculum teams are doing to make sure that we have the appropriate amount of rigor in our local assessments and expectations. At the middle school, standards proficiency for core content classes was 74.1%, with science and social studies showing the highest levels of proficiency. And at the middle school, the subgroup performance data shows small performance gaps between the various subgroups, and that subgroup data is monitored regularly as part of our PLC process. At the high school level, the overall standards proficiency was 73.5% for core classes, and ELA had the highest levels of proficiency. At the high school, subgroup performance data once again showed small gaps, and students with special education needs were the group that are an area of focus. Okay, now we're gonna move into our STAR assessments. The STAR assessments are national benchmarking assessments that we give three times per year, and then our buildings use the assessments for progress monitoring for students who they are watching, and they assess them a little more frequently. STAR Early Literacy is used to assess early literacy skills of our kindergarten students. The percent of students meeting the expected benchmark increased for all buildings from the beginning of the year administration through the end-of-year administration. Easton Wood demonstrated the most growth in average scale score, and Freedom showed a 22% increase in the percentage of students meeting the benchmark from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. STAR Reading is used to assess students in the area of reading, and all students in grades 1 through 10 are assessed. The percentage of students meeting the benchmark at each grade level ranged from 40 to 76%. Please note in this slide that, in upcoming reading slides, that the 10th grade data is an incomplete data set and that we're missing students in our pre-AP English 10 class, so that skewed their data downward just a bit. So just keep that in mind as you're reviewing these. In grades 1 through 5, the end-of-year average grade-level equivalency met or exceeded the actual grade level, and then we see a little bit of a trend downward as we get into the higher grades. In grades 1 through 6, 8, and 9, they all exceeded the grade-level scale score cut mark, and 9th grade showed the highest gain in year-to-year performance in terms of scale score. So that scale score cut mark means that for students to be considered on-grade level, they would have a scale score at or above that mark, and then so we're just looking at the overall average scale scores for every student in the grade who took that. On this slide and upcoming slides, you'll see several data points. The blue line is the average scale score at the beginning of the year. The orange line is the average scale score at the end of the year, and the chart to the right shows the average scale score to be on-grade level based on the national norming data. At the first grade level, the average end-of-year scale score was 228, and all buildings exceeded that benchmark score, which was 105. The average scale score growth across the district was 133 points. The small box at the bottom shows the difference between the average scale score for the beginning of the year to end-of-year benchmark. And at the beginning of the year, the first grade on-grade level benchmark was 71. The end-of-year was 105, which would have been a growth expectation of 34 points, so that's how we get the 34 in the box. Our district average growth was 133 points, which exceeds those national kind of normed expectations. The end-of-year second grade average scale score was 355, which exceeded the end-of-year benchmark cut score of 279 by 76 points. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark, and the average scale score grew 121 points from the beginning to the end of the year. The end-of-year third grade average scale score was 474, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 392. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark. The average scale score grew 113 points. The end-of-year fourth grade average scale score was 586, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 479 by 107 points. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark, and the average scale score grew 109 points. The end-of-year fifth grade's average scale score was 699, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 584. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark, and the average scale score grew 111 points. The end-of-year scale score exceeded the spring benchmark in grades 6, 7, 8, and 9, and the beginning-to-end-of-year growth exceeded expectations in grades 6, 8, and 9. The STAR math test assesses students in the area of math, and we assess all students in grades 1 through 8. And our average scale scores ranged from 58% to 86% of students being on level. In grades 1 through 6, the average end-of-year grade-level equivalency was at or above grade The multi-year average end-of-year scale score in math has been flat across grade levels, but all grade levels exceeded the on-grade level scale score cut mark. The grade-level slides in math are set up just the same way as they are in reading. So the end-of-year first grade average scale score was 439, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 357, and all buildings exceeded that spring benchmark, and the average scale score grew 131 points. The end-of-year second grade average scale score was 540, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 476, and all buildings exceeded that benchmark, and the average scale score grew 110 points. The third grade average scale score was 625, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 565. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark, and the average scale score grew 100 points. The end-of-year fourth grade average score was 706, which exceeded the spring benchmark of 627. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark cut score, and the average scale score grew 97 points. The end-of-year fifth grade average scale score was 758, which exceeded the spring benchmark cut score of 684. All buildings exceeded the spring benchmark, and the average scale score grew 70 points. And 6th, 7th, and 8th grade end-of-year average scale scores on STAR math exceeded the scale score benchmarks at each grade level. As we finalize planning for the 2019-2020 school year, this data will be utilized by building and district administrative teams as well as by building steering teams to guide instructional planning and professional development focus areas. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Atkins. SOS Handbook 2019-2020, Mrs. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed 1920 SOS Handbook is presented for the board's review as a first reading.
Thank you. Moving to action items. A fiscal year 2019 budget revision, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things in my realm here, but first is the closeout of FY19. And even though June 30, we'll be closing out FY19, you know, the board's gonna still be looking, taking peeks at FY19 for successive months here. June 30, we'll close it out, of course. August 15 is the ASBR deadline for the prior year, so we'll be looking at the annual secretary board report. We'll submit that to DESI, and that'll come back to the board for a review. Typically, that's at board retreat, that last bullet. We take a look at that, and that's a wonderful snapshot. I keep bringing you guys back to kind of the 30,000-foot view, but something you can go back to and get a lot of information really from just a few pages and really just one page. December 31 is the audit deadline for DESI. We typically have that, you know, earlier, probably October, November, the board will be approving the prior-year audit. But in closing out FY19, there was at least, there were two things, a great fiscal year for us, and actually ended up late in the game even better. So there were two things I wanted to report. This first detail, this first one takes a little bit of context, and I'll try to do that pretty succinctly here, but districts can typically use the membership or ADA, we'll equate those two, but the membership of either the current year, which is an estimate, because you have to do it before the end of the school year, or the previous two school years. And I would say off the cuff, 80% of school districts are gonna use one of the two previous years. That's because they're either growing just a little bit, they have static growth, or they're actually declining. And there are, say, 20% of school districts often consider estimating current year's ADA, current year's membership. And as you have been informed throughout the year, we're up this year. So we've been consistently up month-to-month over 100 students. So that already put us on notice to potentially estimate for this year. And something else, within the formula change, it's recalculated every two years, but the state says it takes more money to educate certain students. Three classes of students that the state says it takes more money to educate are socially economically challenged or disadvantaged students. So to kind of drill down to that point just a little bit, every time that we, the state sets a threshold, and it used to be 35%, 36% actually, 36%, and we usually typically run 40% as a district. So the net between that 36% up to that 40%, we get more money per student. And that threshold dropped to 31%, so it dropped 5%, so we were even gonna get more, to count more ADA. So there was an opportunity maybe, again, to estimate. Even in that, our LEP and our IEP counts went up significantly this year. Not even proportion to the 100 students that we grew, the more than 100 students, but they blew up per category about over 100 students. All that, which I know is a bit convoluted, tells you that by estimating this year, we're gonna capture $500,000 in 5311 or state minimum guarantee for this year. So that's unbudgeted money that we'll capture, and that's a good thing. And then another irony of FY19 is despite a partial government shutdown from the federal government, the Department of Education was funded. So during that time, and we reported that to the board, that, you know, that really didn't impact us directly through the Department of Education. And I gotta tell you, they did good work, because you also know that any given year, we don't get all of our money for Impact Aid. So if we turn in our Impact Aid application, maybe that current year, we will get somewhere between 80 to 90% of those funds, and then we'll get the rest of those funds potentially in future years. This year, that bottom number down there in back payments alone, which was a fairly exceptional year for us, we received $3.2 million. So those are two very significant things that made a really good year for us look even a lot better financially. On the expenditure side, you know, pretty routine year, nothing exceptional, certainly nothing exceptional that would be reoccurring, but the main reason why we always make this motion is because if you remember, part of our B2 eligibility is making sure that our per pupil expenditure stays below 125% of state average. So one of the last things that we'll do, we'll be doing this all the way up until KPM comes and the audit, we'll be negotiating with the auditor on what items we can put in Fund 4, because Fund 4 expenditures don't count towards our PPE. And so with that, I'll ask that the enact revenues and expenditures to actual year-end account totals and necessary transfers to close out FY19.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Mr. Kennedy makes the motion. Mr. Crider, second. All in favor, show hands. Motion carries. FY20 budget proposal, Dr. Berger.
Right into, from FY19, right into FY20. A couple of these slides, we'll spend a little time on, then, Mr. President, I'll try to keep it hopping here. Shared this similar slide with this with the leadership team, but really, when we're building the budget on the expenditure side, the salaries and benefits, that makes up 80% of our budget. So once we get that plugged in, there's not a lot of pie left. I mean, we've got to distribute, there's a lot of places to distribute and allocate it, but that's a huge piece of the budget is salaries and benefits. From there, director department budgets, those kind of, they start out to roll over. All the directors will roll those over, but they rarely give up anything that they're already doing and charged of, so those typically grow a little bit. Building budgets are sent out to principals, those are done on a per pupil basis. Capital projects from both the district and the building budgets, the building budgets for capital projects are also an amount per pupil. It was $10 this year per pupil in their building. And then, you know, last 30 days, we're still working on the budget. The budget lives the entire year. It never stops. But, you know, we finally will shut it down 15 days, maybe outside of budget approval, and we'll start putting that FY20 budget together and creating the presentation. And pending tonight's approval, that'll be the last thing that we'll do, and then July 1, we're on FY20. This will be a familiar slide, and I put this line in between. It'll look a little bit different this year because I've actually taken out the debt service fund, because we don't pay a debt service. I've always bring that to your attention. And from there, really, at the 30,000-foot view, you have an operations budget that's comprised of incidentals and teachers, and you have a capital outlay budget. This is gonna be recurring expenses, operations. These are, for the most part, gonna be one-time expenses. And so the goal every year is, can we create an operations budget without creating recurring expenses that are gonna go in the red? And we've once again done that. So if you'll notice here, the balance of $16 million, 16.2, and where are we ending at? We project to end at 16.2. And those board members who have been around me a while know I write a very conservative budget. You know, outside of things that would just be totally blind sides, I think we'll do better than that. On the capital budget, capital outlay budget, $31 million, 31.7 is what we're starting with, and the estimated balance is 14.4 million. That's a problem. That's running it in the red. So, or I say it's a problem, it's a problem if I don't have a reason for that to happen. It's 17.3 in the red. So in an upcoming slide here, you'll see that we have 17 million to the Phase 2 of Waynesville Middle School. It's somewhat of an arbitrary number. It'll be changed in January on January revision, because we don't know how much we'll pay out in this current fiscal year. So where's the other 300,000? I've also got a slide to show you where that's at, too. We start out with budget concerns and unknowns. FY19 state revenues, despite all the noise that has occurred throughout the year, did come in at the consensus level. So the state made budget. In fact, it's not completely certain yet, but they believe they'll be above that $150 million trigger mark that will set in the next round of tax cuts via Senate Bill 509. That was enacted in '17. It was actually approved in '14, enacted in '17, and it's a bit of a problem. It's still, I've been, every year, that slide has had something about Senate Bill 509 in it, because it's still a concern of mine. The concern is, if the state makes $150 million, each phase of budget cuts costs $160 million. So the state is gonna have less and less resources for prisons, health, education, higher ed, and so we'll see how that plays out, but it is certainly a concern of mine. Another concern that we all need to turn our attention to is in October, when the federal fiscal year starts, we haven't seen this word in a while. Sequestration is back. So we've been able to raise the caps two times, but it'll be back on the table, and Dr. Henry and I will head back out to DC to advocate again to raise the caps. If we were not successful in that, the Department of Education would take a 9% decrease, and so it's gonna be critical funding for title programming and of course... so it's going to be critical funding for title programming and of course title late programming being Impact Aid. Hold harmless, something that the board is aware of, we're going to be hearing more about as, or as early as the retreat coming up in July, but be hearing more and more about this. 2025 looks to be a long ways out, but really we want to make sure that we, we know what happens in 2025, and that is for our B2, we are a hold harmless status until 2025. And then it's at this, at this point, we see it to be inevitable that something will have to increase local effort once again. There could be some things that change in that, but that's what we said all along in Prop 1 was, we, we're going to secure, secure funding for 10 years, and 2025 will be the time that, that'll kind of come to a head. So certainly that's a concern for long-term planning. One thing for certain though, Prop 1 was critical. Without Prop 1, all that would be upon us, not even this year, but it would be a year ago and really two years ago. This, now with that negative gloomy news, we'll throw a little bit of positive news because we don't like to look at students as dollars very often, but the reality is membership or ADA drives funding, drives Impact Aid funding and drives minimum guarantee funding. If you look here, the green line is current year, and we stayed about 125 students above previous, our previous high, which is for the most part, the previous year FY 18, there were some dips, but this is good news. We don't want radical rapid growth, but a nice bump was good and, you know, I could take less growth than that, is easy to adjust to and keeps a little more revenue coming in than previous year. Some of the revenue highlights, local revenues are projected to increase $558,000. Prop C, combined current taxes and Prop C are projected to increase 305. This Prop C is also on ADA. So it's a local, it's considered a local revenue, but it was a replacement of local tax many years ago, and it's an amount of money this year for FY 20, it's about $1,000 per ADA. So as ADA grows, that grows. State revenues are projected to increase a million dollars, a little over a million dollars. The majority of that is in the minimum guarantee. The two components that make up the minimum guarantee are weighted ADA or ADA, or we're kind of for just our purposes here, talking about membership, membership times the SAT, the state adequacy target, and that's the number of dollars they're going to give us per membership or per weighted ADA. That's up 9 million, or excuse me, I wish it was $9 million, but $900,000. We're also, you might hear about, and it's minimal, but we, we are, I don't budget for it, but we are collecting ADA out of preschool. It's, right now, we're hoping that it, we gained about 15 ADA. So another component that would be weighted ADA, 15 preschool, so it doesn't generate a lot of money, we don't even budget for it. I want to kind of see how it's going to historically map out before I'll budget for it. Federal revenues, as always, right around $15 million in Impact Aid is what's budgeted annually. Breakdown of revenue, what makes us different is this federal right here. Typically, a school district is going to be 10% federally funded. And of course, we know we're exceptional within the state, we're even exceptional within the nation, being one of approximately 20 school districts that are considered heavily impacted. Federal revenue, where that's mapped out over previous years. So again, we make no apologies for this. These funds are seemingly in jeopardy every single year. We, we budget very conservatively and we typically will revenue in more than what we've budgeted, and that's a wise approach, particularly with Impact Aid. That could be the theme of, of all my revenues, but certainly Impact Aid, we just, we don't make apologies for that. State revenue, so we've had, you know, even through a drop in ADA, drop in membership, the state adequacy target, they've bumped that up, and we, it's been offset the, the drop in ADA that we experienced in previous years, and a nice bump here into 2020. And really, the, the state adequacy target is, is recalculated every two years, but projected to, to continue to increase. So outside of problems at the state, and there could be, but we see positive, positive forecasts there. County revenues, there are literally, you know, of the hundreds of lines that make up the budget and probably a hundred lines that make up the revenue, county revenues are three lines, so there's not much money to that, and it's pretty much a static number. Oops, jumped over to local revenue. Local revenue, and again, this Prop C number in black, statewide sales tax, but it's attributed to local, this $9.4 million, that's the local tax rate times RSS valuation. So our 295 times about $300 billion, we'll find out in August. Another irony of, of public school finance, we're writing a local revenue budget, but we don't even know, we haven't even set our tax rate yet. We don't know for certain RSS value. It's been pretty consistent, we can do a lot of projecting, and local revenues for, for us here in Waynesville is a pretty, it's, historically, we've done a really good job with that, there's not too much that moves. Other revenue can be virtually anything, other local, state, or federal revenue, oftentimes it's insurance payouts, we got a couple of those pending, but, you know, spec house that we might have out there, surplus property, those type of things. Breakdown of revenue, couple of things that I wanted to make points on here is Impact Aid is virtually the only thing that goes into our Fund IV capital outlay. And not just Impact Aid, B2. So we're going to put $10 million over here in operations that are going to help fund it, but outside of some very small revenues by statutory requirement have to go into Fund IV, and I'm saying they are very, very minimally, that's the only revenue that we'll generate in Fund IV. So the importance of B2 Impact Aid is, it's just so critical. Other, you know, here's the DOD, it's usually around $700,000. It's Impact Aid, but instead of coming out of Department of Ed, it comes out of the Department of Defense. 10 million for BSP. Dr. Atkins manages about a million dollars in her title program, she manages more than that, but just in her title programs. Classroom trust fund money will be about $3 million, 30 million in basic formula, 5.5 probably in Prop C, and current taxes, we saw in the earlier slide, a little over 9 million. Budget highlights, remember, this is the Prop 1, and we've tracked those, we've got those designated in the budget so we can ensure to our community that the things that we said that we would give them, outside of securing B2, are, we can track those down, those numbers remain static and they're back in the budget for FY 20. This $574,000 is the half percent increase to non-certified, and the multiplier increases we did to certain columns in the salary schedule that was approved in a previous month. That $574,000 does not reflect everybody taking a vertical step down, that's about $650,000 just to do that. But just to add the half percent increase to the, to the base of the, of the non-certified, and then those multiplier, that's a half million dollars. For the SOS changes that will go on in FY 20 due to increased participation, we've got that projected to cost at about $124,000. It's a pretty hard number to nail down though, because we just, just don't know how relaxing some of those rules are going to impact participation, that'll drive the cost. Big budget for capital projects this year, that's just a few of the things listed, those are detailed out in the budget, but at $23 million, that's one of the larger Fund IV budgets we've, that's the largest Fund IV budget I've written in six years. Employee salaries and benefits, we'll kind of hop through some of these, I'll take any cues to slow down. But historically, you can see, we keep investing into the salary schedule. One thing to note, when we say we're going to put a million dollars in the salary schedule, we automatically have to budget in another 145,000 because for certified salary, the retirement is 14.5%. So of course, we always talk in those larger numbers because we've, we've got to ensure we hit the mark. The incidental expenditure is a little concerning to me initially. You can see it has some volatility, and some of the volatility, you know, here it jumps down, but it takes a big jump here. And Dr. Washington does a great job with this, but one of the things that she has to watch for that creates some of the volatility is, if we have an increase in IEPs and she can't staff the, staff that, that need, she may have to use a professional service or contract that out. So that would go out of our Fund II, out of our teachers' fund expenditure, and increase our incidental expenditure. But if you drill down into this a little further, also because of this jump here, for one, I don't think this is going to end at 14.4. I'll, I'll try to do some work with the auditors to get some of this money into Fund IV, that's what we do every year, try to beat that number down. But K-12 ITC, first year of, of, a full first year into that, increase that of $400,000. And as well as the next slide, I'll show you something that the board is, we've brought to the board that we have budgeted for, we won't get final approval for until July, but is our after-school super snack program. So this again is also somewhat of an arbitrary number because I don't know what it's going to cost. Here's what I do know, is that we are projecting revenues to meet the expenditure. So even though it's going to increase the incidental, and it may be 315, it may be a little less than that, it may be a little more, I think it's going to be a little less than that, but we feel confident we'll have revenues to meet that. Another example of that incidental, not to jump back one slide, but DODA and MMD grants, you know, that, a lot of the activities that go out of those grants, professional development might be an example, are going to pop this incidental figure up, but we have revenues to match it. So that was a number we wanted to drill down on, and we did. This is kind of good news, the transportation expenditure actually is budgeted to go down, we'll see where it falls out, may jump over that in January Vision. Fuel prices go up as projected today, will definitely go up. So that's, there's several things that drive that, but certainly fuel is one of the main factors. Breakdown of operating expenses, just the number that I like to continue to point out is 80%, 80% of the pie is in salaries and benefits. We are a human organization, a people organization, it drives the expenditure. Waynesville Middle School project, the contract total is 19.1. Again, as I mentioned, arbitrary number of 17 million, I may try to tune that in January, but it, you know, I'm just not sure how much will be paid out in FY 19. I think 17 is as good a guess as, as you can come up with at this point. Have a little bit of money, just some, a couple of highlights of other capital money, but again, Waynesville Middle School rap, I think that's a healthy number in there. If, 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 if I had to come to the board in January, or more likely for FY 21, it'd probably be in that, the courtyard, we've, we just haven't nailed down what we're going to do in that area. We budgeted that money last year, and then we, we wound up not spending it because Phase 2, we thought it may impact the construction of Phase 2. But just some, some relatively smaller numbers there to wrap up Fund, or Phase 2. I mentioned earlier, where is the other $300,000? The auditor is getting, and they've been, there's been a trend in the last few years where we used to take a little bit of latitude as we closed out FY 19 and opened up FY 20, and we'd do some things maybe in July, but still pay them out FY 19. They're kind of tightening the screws on us on that a little bit. So there were a couple of things that I just, you know, didn't play the game, want to make KPM happy, I just budgeted again in FY 20, and the secure entries and the marquee signs, both of them kind of hit stumbling blocks. The secure entries hit a stumbling block in that it was a very difficult project to, to bid spec. And so we kind of got delayed in that, and so we put that in two phases, and the second phase of that, as reported earlier in study session, will go out in, in a second phase in FY 20. The marquee signs, we didn't get approval to put those up on post. So that blindsided us, we didn't know, and we're still pending approval as of today, unless there was any late great news came on. But right now, we're waiting for approval to put our marquee signs up on post. So that's in FY 20, we'll hope to have that approval and get those done for August. Lease purchase agreements, primarily now from the high school completion project, we'll get, so we, we have about 1.5 out of the gate that we have to obligate or allocate to, to meet in the lease purchase agreements. Kind of in the more immediate future, we've kind of got this double payment that we've got to budget for, but other than that, it's pretty, pretty much just under 1.5. Capital expenditure, again, that's a big, that's a high watermark for us, and that 23 million may get close to that, too. And I guess there's a chance we go a little over if the construction ran ahead of schedule and we paid it off early or something, and can't imagine that happened, neither can dawn. We're both hoping for no rain. So. Total district expenditure, 94 million. Like I said, every time you see these spikes, you know what it is, it's a Fund IV expenditure in capital, it's a building. Going back to this, just real quick, it's the same slide we started out with, that's where we project to end. I think the important things to note, if I was, wanted you to take anything, the board, and we've talked about these things, but this, this number right here, this estimated balance, I think we'll beat that, but even if we hit that or got anywhere close to that mark, that represents about 25% reserves. Our district policy dictates that our reserve level will stay at 20%, and so we're, we're going to land at a comfortable level above that, you know, barring the unforeseen. And then this $31 million, that's why we build those balances, that's why B2 has been such a wonderful thing for our patrons, for our community is, we budget conservatively, we take whatever we bring in, we, we transfer that to Fund IV, we build a balance, and then we do something awesome, like with the Waynesville Middle School, like the high school, like Freedom, like so many projects we've done, are either completely built, in the case of Waynesville Middle School, or partially built by B2 funds. So we're going to end at this $14 million area, which is still a, a nice amount in Fund IV and a, a safe amount. As always, our budget development goals have remained, and we've met those goals again in writing this budget. Field any questions? Might mention, you know, I do every time, I invite board members, staff members, I met with a staff member today on the budget, it was for a class, but patrons, the budget can be complicated, can be intimidating, it's over 100 pages, but when you come in, we talk about it, break it down, department, started a department, it just gets bigger and bigger, anybody can make sense of it, and we invite anybody to come in, any patron, anytime, make an appointment, we'll, we'll try and answer any questions you have.
Do I have a motion to approve fiscal year 20 budget proposal?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Crider makes a motion, I have a second. During second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Food, service, price setting, Dr. Berger.
Yes, thank you, and budget related also, but based on the paid lunch equity tool from DESI and to meet healthy, hungry, free kids, Kids Act requirements, district is required to increase prices 10 cents each for breakfast and lunch, there will be no impact on free and reduced lunches. The only thing I would add is, you know, we, we have asked for a waiver of just about every two years, and the unwritten rules, you can be granted a waiver, our last increase was in 17, we're going to be forced to increase our lunch and breakfast.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. 2019, 2020 board meeting schedule, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Each year in June, we approve our schedule for the upcoming year, and generally, we're able to, to meet that. I don't think we've even, knock on wood, I won't mention the snow thing. So, but there is a couple differences I do want to point out to you on there. July 8th, we, we have several folks that are going to be out, and in order to have a meeting, we moved it from the 15th to the 8th, and then we'll turn around on the 22nd and have retreat. So just to point that out to you, that's, that's a little bit of a difference there. We also run into some of our other holiday-related issues, Martin Luther King, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. holidays, the January is the reason why we have a date change in there, we have President's Day as well, and then the March date is when myself and Dr. Berger are in Washington DC with NAFIS at the Hill. So that's why you have your changes and wrinkles there, but I would recommend that for approval.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the board's schedule?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Crider makes a motion, I have a second. During second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. E1 to 1 student handbook, first reading, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The 1 to 1 student handbook has been revised to reflect the discussion during our May 2019 study session. The revision makes the Chromebook insurance optional for students in grade 6 through 12 as part of the Chromebook take-home process. And the initial version of the handbook that we used during our pilot at 6th grade center this year, students were required to purchase the insurance in order to take it home, to take the Chromebook home. We are requesting to waive first reading and are recommending a motion to approve the handbook changes as presented.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Crider makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
During second, all in favor, show hands. Ms. during second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. MOSIP ballot, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed during study session, we have before you the ballot for the MOSIP board versus sending a delegate physically or sending a proxy. We are recommending that the two candidates that are being recommended for the two slots available are approved by the board, then we will send this into the MOSIP board.
Okay, do I have any comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the MOSIP ballot?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Keenan makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Kreider, second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. District technology surplus, Dr. Berger.
Making room for Project Edge, board approval is requested to declare used, damaged, outdated technology equipment as surplus property.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Ms. Ponder makes a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Keenan makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, show hands. We are adjourned. Thank you.